I'm Ivy.
And welcome to.
All right, I'm getting feedback.
It's on the side. No.
This one here. Not only really happens when you're doing one of your laptops to the files that way.
We're going to try this again. Okay, welcome everyone to the Berlin Planning and zoning Commission meeting. Today is March 6, 2025. I'm a call meeting to order at 7:10 in the evening. I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, everyone. Maureen, I'll ask for a roll call. Steve, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you this time. I'm sorry, President.
That's okay. You're gonna be seated this evening?
Okay, no problem.
All right, thank you for our excused members. Alrighty. I'm moving on to the approval of minutes for February 20th, 2025. Hang on just a sec. I'm sorry, everyone.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Any additions or corrections? No, Brian? Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion to approve. Ms. Josie is going to second for the discussion on the minutes. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. All right. First up is going to be the receipt of new applications and scheduling of public hearings as required or necessary. I'm just gonna pause right here. All right. Okay, so the first one is a special permit and site plan application for Sal Morello for the construction of a nine-one-story metal butler-style building at 04 Rod Road, property of JSJ Berlin Development LLC in the PI zone. And I guess we have a suggested date for this is gonna be.
Since we wrote the agenda, we did look at his pending and he applications that he may have gotten asserted applications this week, spring and springing. And we're suggesting April 3rd for this.
The 3rd of April?
So there are upcoming meetings. You have meeting on March 20th being your next meeting. You have one meeting in April, which is April 3rd, because the second meeting would be this week. May 1st and May 15th, just to see a picture of what it looks like, had it out. The suggested date is April 3rd. Anyway, it does require a public hearing.
Okay, alrighty.
I will move the schedule for April 3rd.
Okay, we have a motion for scheduling April 3rd by Mr. Rogan. Then we have the second by Ms. Josie for the discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. Next up is a special permit with a site plan application for Aaron Greenblatt, Vesta Corporation, for the construction of elderly housing at 143 Percival Avenue, property of the town of Berlin in the R11 zone. And you need a suggested date for this?
So this is expected to be on the Henry Wetlands and Water Force Commission agenda on April 1st. And therefore, I'm gonna suggest April 3rd. You know, the town is anxious to. We've been moving along. The project had at one time, the previous similar. A senior housing project did have Wetlands approval. We don't know how many meetings of Wetlands it'll take. But I'm gonna suggest the 3rd, and then if the public hearing does need to be postponed due to the review process or or other requirements, then you can always postpone that public hearing. But in order to keep things moving, we're gonna suggest the 3rd.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't go longer than May.
Well, I hope that's not gonna put any pressure on inland wetlands.
I don't believe so. I talked to the Wetlands agent. They just, they, you know, we all just got the applications in this past week. But we've been looking at them from the staff standpoint for many months, including selecting Vesta to be the the partner the town has on this project.
Okay. Alrighty, Commission, how do we feel about that? Staff is suggesting April 3rd, although they'll be in front of Wetlands April 1st.
April 1st. And if there is a delay or there's a problem where they can't do the presentation to you, I wouldn't expect the public hearing to end in one night, nor for decisions to be made. But the presentation, the getting it out there in the public, the starting the whole process of vetting the application.
Okay.
Then again, if during the staff review process for either Wetlands or planning and zoning, we feel.
That it's too much.
We will suggest that you postpone the hearing or that they either ask for it to be postponed or postponed.
Okay.
Without opening it, if necessary.
Okay. Commission, what's the pleasure?
Go ahead, Brian.
I'll move the schedule for April 3rd.
Okay, Mr. Rogan has the motion. Ms. Josie has the second. Further discussion, questions, and all those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. Special permit application of David Barbagallo for an accessory dwelling unit. It's an ADU at 265 Lincoln Street in the R15 zone. And we have a suggested date. Are you gonna push this for April 3rd, too? Oh, my God.
You know, it's an ADU application, a conversion.
Yeah.
Within an existing dwelling, so it's, you'll probably be scheduled as the first item on the agenda or promptly before the public hearings we expect to be more likely.
Okay. I'm just hoping that we're not gonna be overdoing it on ourselves April 3rd. Okay.
Yeah, I actually hope that we could schedule that for the 20th, but it's too late to schedule it.
But it's 20th of March, we couldn't.
You'll put the notice in the paper. We don't have time to notice it through March.
Yes.
So it can't be before the 3rd.
Oh, because it would have to be today. Okay, understood. All right, Commission, what's your thoughts on that? Anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to schedule for April 3rd.
Okay, Ms. Josie this time has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, any questions, and all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, so moved. Okay, public hearings. Do we have a read for the public hearings? All right, good. All right, Brian, I'll ask you to read the notice into record.
Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at a regular meeting on Thursday, March 6, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. Proposed text and related map amendments of FHI Studio at the direction of Berlin Economic Development Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission to amend Berlin zoning regulations relating to commercial zoning in 6.g.bt/1 and 6.h.bt-2 and 6.csp/dd and 8.f.ccd-2/Kensington Village Overlay elimination of 6.d and 6.e.spd overlay and spdd2 overlay and related amendments to 2.b definitions and 6.j and 8.1 bulk table requirements as posted on the town website, www.burlancet.gov, in the Town Clerk's Office and Planning and Zoning Department. Applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, dated this 20th day of February 2025 at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, New Britain Herald Legal Notices/Classified Advertisings, dates of publication Saturday, February 22nd, 2025, and Friday, February 28th, 2025. Posted with Berlin Town Clerk, Thursday, February 24th, 2025.
Thank you very much. Okay, so who do, for the subdivision application for the Kokomo Brothers? Alrighty.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Yes.
Just wanted to remind there are anyone who have been following the other application that you, at the last meeting continued to March 20th. I just wanted to spread out a reminder that the regular meeting item, the site plan amendment application for MC Barber property at 1427 Berlin Town Hall was continued to March 20th.
Okay.
So I just wanted that out there in case anyone.
All right, was interested. Okay, all right, terrific. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair, staff. So.
I'm sorry, just your name and address.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Thomas Kokomo, One Fitzwilliam Park, Farmington, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess we're all off the hook. The DEEP had wrote back and said that they could not, I believe you guys are aware, they could not really make a decision until we did much, much more surveying and additional work. So that was about, I don't know, a month ago or so. Am I right, Maureen?
Before the last, just before the last meeting.
Just left.
Give it the day before, which is why no decision could be made at the last meeting as to how to proceed.
Right, and so then I reached out to Jennifer because this commission asked me to get some alternative plans. I was a little apprehensive because I just thought, hey, if they, yeah, and well, we waited and we didn't get anything right away. So I looked at some alternative plans. And I did a little bit of due diligence into the meeting that I missed. And I had a list of some of the neighbors who left some notes from, with that representative from me, their phone numbers and names. And one of the people, or most of the people, I believe I wasn't here, so I won't speak for them. But it was my understanding that they were encouraged by this potential project. And they were interested in continuity and consistency. So I said to, and so I spoke to them, and they were all under the impression that this was gonna be a neighborhood of affordable housing, like where they lived. And that wasn't the case. So I had our engineer review it and do some design, both now, both coming up from, I'm not sure, Somerset or into Wilkes Pond. So I had two, two, two new designs. I did not bring them with me because it's pretty much moot because we're at the end of the, oh, you do have the one from. Okay. Okay, okay, so I didn't bring the other one that way. But I guess based on Commissioner Zigmund's questioning about the road going up through Somerset, right? He was correct. I had no knowledge of that. Maureen showed it to me. So we then had our engineer, but I didn't bring the plan, come up with a neighborhood affordable, too. So it would be the same, very similar plans, just one coming up through Somerset, the other one coming up through, or going down through Wilkes Pond. Now that the DEP weighed in on it, and it may take so much more time. Sorry, I'm. We're going to, we're forced essentially to take the approach through Somerset. And like I stated to you, I do not think that's the best approach, but it looks like the only feasible approach at the time, at the moment. And so I asked Jennifer, I said, what, what do you, what do you think? Should I have this conversation with this commission? And she said that she finds that this commission is very receptive to, you know, to other potentials. And I said, okay, then I'll just do that. I'll keep the meeting open and let, so I could, so I could at least have your ear while we're open. And Maureen gave me some input that the site would not, there's some reasons why the neighborhood affordable would not work in that zone. There's a maximum of 50 units allowed in the current zone for neighborhood affordable. And the existing subdivision that Wilkes Pond and Raspberry Lane subdivision has 50 units. So it's at its capacity there. And then there's another caveat that states, and there might be another one after Maureen, another caveat that states you cannot have a neighborhood affordable subdivision within a mile, I believe, of another neighborhood affordable subdivision. But I find that one a little peculiar, like if we're going to, we're going to provide workforce housing that America so desperately needs, and Connecticut probably more so, why would that be there? So I asked, I asked Jennifer, I said, what do you think? I've asked Maureen, I've asked Alexa, I've asked everyone, can you guys opine out for me? And they all said, well, you know, we can give, you know, we can provide, you know, some support from staff, but it's ultimately this, this commission's decision. So with that being said, I'm going to withdraw this application. I'm out of time. But we're going to come back to this commission again, and we'd like to come back to this commission with a neighborhood affordable. The, the, and we'd like to make a text amendment, and we, you know, on the basis of, things have changed, right? The expensive things have, it's, the country's gone out of control for housing. And you've seen a lot of affordable housing apartment style in this town. You haven't seen a neighborhood affordable subdivision in quite some time. I'm not sure how long it's been. And I mean, this is, it's not, it's not very dense, right? The subdivision that I showed you was five lots. The neighborhood affordable would be eight lots. I feel as though it's an adjacent property. And when I did some due diligence based on what Commissioner Zigmund said to, to staff and Maureen pulling up these notes, I noticed and I talked to the Valentines that they actually had that property under deposit. And they were gonna incorporate into their neighborhood affordable project at the time. But because of this, that the hurdle that I've encountered with the DEP and Sage Park, they just said, too much work, too much time, let's move on. And so they just focused on Raspberry and Wilkes Pond. So I think, I think it makes sense where if you've got an adjacent parcel to an adjacent neighborhood affordable and like the last house on that non-coldisac that I wanted to extend, where the bus couldn't turn around, was the last neighborhood affordable home that's adjacent to this parcel. And I wanted to know, and well, how does this commission feel about? I mean, it's only gonna be two or three affordable homes, but it's actually two or three affordable homes that people in that neighborhood said to me, one of them, my daughter's a teacher, and her boyfriend's in construction, her husband's in construction, and they can't find a house in town. They want to live in town, and they can't afford a house in town. You go to an open house, or you go to a house that goes on the market, and there's 35 people there, and they're $100,000 over asking price, right? And they can only, they have, they can only afford what they can afford. And that, and I don't know, it's missing, you know, Chris Edge is here. He knows the numbers really well. I haven't even spoken to him, but I know he knows the numbers really well. And I think that, you know, hey, there's a need. There's, we know, actually, we don't think, we know there's a need. I mean, the stats are there. So if I can just help two or three families that want to stay in town, some of them might be your teachers, your children's teachers, or your grandchildren's teachers, I think that's a good thing. So I'm wondering, how do you feel if I come back about that text amendment?
Too much technology for you.
Yeah, too much technology now, the old computer and everything. I, I think that's a good idea myself, okay? The only problem that I see is that I don't have any problem attaching affordable to affordable. You know, you're doing the same application but under a different name. That's what you're doing. But, but the affordable on Raspberry are not affordable anymore. They, they, they're over 20 years old. The time ran out, so now they're regular houses. Okay, so they're not affordable no more. I, I don't have any problem with this affordable subdivision, to tell you the truth. But you can't climb on it because they're not affordable no more, I guess. That's what I'm assuming. And so there has to be a waiver of the requirement of, what is it, 50 houses, she said it, or whatever.
Well, we, well.
Well, the, what was the?
Fifty houses, but if I do come up through Somerset now, it's, you know, it's not, it's not continuous. So the waiver would be less than a mile.
Yeah, 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 I mean.
And maybe if that's the case, to be quite frank, and I did not know that, maybe when we make that text amendment, something we could explore, then it's, it's not only a 20-year period of time. It's affordable perpetually.
Yeah, so the requirements aren't now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Many times that, yes, but it's a longer time than now. Many times that, yes, but it's a longer time than now.
Yeah, I personally would love to have have it forever affordable or at least fifty, sixty years or something like that. But those people in Raspberry, we just discussed this afternoon, actually, Maureen, that they go all of a sudden after twenty years got a big windfall. You know what I mean? They had an affordable home and all of a sudden it's not a portable home and they these homes back then, they all they did is not build the second floor and only use the first floor as a ranch and made it affordable. Well, now it's not affordable. They're go finish that second floor and their house value gone up the sky, you know?
I just have some thoughts. So I'm open to the discussion. But what comes to mind for me right off the bat is that any text amendment that you propose will apply to every other application that we receive. So even though what you propose is with your project in mind, we're going to have to consider it for how it's going to impact other possible projects. So you know, with that in mind, I'm open to the suggestion. I like the idea of maybe making an amendment, but we would have to be mindful of possible unintended consequences.
You're right. So so actually, Maureen, you're piggybacking on one concern that Maureen had. She had the identical concern. And that's why I said easiest way it would be an adjacent parcel, right? And then we could march on down to all the neighborhood affordables and how many of them have excess land?
This one actually doesn't bother it if not immediately. The lot to the south on Wilkes Pond. On the east side of Wilkes Pond was part of Valentine's traditional subdivision. It's only housing on the left side or the west side of Wilkes Pond that were part of the neighborhood affordable housing development. So it is there, but there is the the piece of land that the town owns.
Well, no, I mean, the point of of land does actually hit right to their property if you look at it. Does.
You know, you have a point.
I don't have my glasses on, but it looks.
But I'm sure there could be specific wording that's there.
But I, but but so, yeah. I I knew you would be mind, I'm sorry, but I knew that would be part of the thought process immediately after Maureen said it to me. And I thought, well, can I craft the amendment? And maybe it only affects one other part, potential parcel. And I can, so I appreciate that.
I I I don't know.
Brian had a, just holding his thought.
No, I was just going to piggyback off.
We've done waivers.
I just like that Mr. Kokomo said that I was right.
I like that.
Load it down. Commissioner Jorsy's always right.
That's a little.
So you're going to be with your line, is that okay?
So so what? But I would like to, you know, here maybe just and then I'm going to withdraw the application. I appreciate Mr. Zigmund, I appreciate Ms. Jorsy's. I don't know if anyone else had any other thoughts where if I do propose this text amendment, I take your I I know I've got you right on, I don't want to put you on the spot, but some of your concerns.
I mean, I think I think Commissioner Jorsy expressed what I was thinking. But that leads to my next question. Does that mean that you are going to abandon Somerset or the other street coming up with a conventional subdivision?
But no, so so this 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 proposal that I that I modified from Wilk, from Wilkes Pond. I would do the same. And like this, just going up Somerset, that.
That's what I mean. But would you do it as a conventional subdivision as opposed to an affordable subdivision? Because it seems like you're now, it seems like you're now going for the text amendment. And that your subdivision will then be based on whether or not this commission accepts or alters the text amendment to accommodate you.
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right. So do we need a motion to?
Oh, quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Thank you for saying that.
Help me understand. And I'm trying, I'm thinking of the houses that are in the neighborhood and kind of what the value is there if it's affordable. Am I allowed to ask like price ranges of what the houses would fall? I I'm trying to listen. As teachers affordability, I was just trying to understand.
Use the percentage.
On numerous occasions, and that is a calculation that we rely on the state and include the income that are in the state and income. And then they, when a buyer comes to to decide on a property, they then have to be vetted to make sure they meet those criteria. So the criteria better set out whether it's eighty percent affordable, sixty percent affordable, five percent affordable, you know. You know, you've got your home.
Yeah, you've got the wrong.
And I'm not sure in our neighborhood affordable housing regs as currently written, I don't think it says the percent affordability, but it probably refers to the statute.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, so you, so I I'm still just thinking about your question. I'm I might, I may have confused myself.
I I don't know. Maybe I did.
No, I'm, I I barely got my, it took me a doctorate to get my undergrad, so it might be me, doctorate duration of time.
Understand that one.
So, so I'm withdrawing the application as it's as we speak, or as it's set to with that proposal. I I my intent is to come back with a and a neighborhood affordable application with a text amendment. Your question to me was, would that mean you'd abandon the conventional subdivision?
Yes.
Well, I I would guess I would, I would, I ha, I guess I would. I'm not sure the procedure, but I'll ask Maureen in the open forum. Do you, do I come with both a conventional and a neighborhood at the same time?
I think you might want to just come with your text amendment.
Okay.
And and that's what, that's your first step.
Right.
Because I would hate to see you spend the money on somebody to engineer a subdivision based on a hypothetical. So you would want to do the text amendment first, I believe, to see whether or not what the flavor of the commission would be and how if they wanted to adopt your idea. And then you'd be able to run with it or you'd have to rethink it and say, okay, you know, they said, yes, so I can do this. They said, no. What do I do? So that's, that's all I was saying.
Like, I appreciate that. So I thought that, okay, so I was under the impression that, I mean, so just so you're aware, the engineering is the same. The layout becomes different, right? A conventional, I believe.
Just want you to spend more, I didn't want you to spend.
Well, I just, the time is money too. So I didn't know if I brought both applications in and and with the text amendment that if 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 the text amendment fails, that 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 becomes moot and then it's just, will you be voting on that on a convention?
Yeah.
I've got one just procedural way to to bring it in. Is that one is with the text amendment. Okay, but we have affordable rigs in place. We have many subdivisions. The applicant came in and asked for a waiver of certain pieces of of the regulations. Okay, so I, because of the the question that Diane had is that how many more properties does does it affect? Okay. If they come away, it comes underneath the portable now and just asks for the waiver of certain sections of the portable now. Is that a easier way? That's all I'm asking because the text amendment takes a little bit more.
No, I think your checks don't have provision for a waiver.
Oh, there is no provision.
Oh, okay.
Down so far.
Okay. Well, we waive sidewalks, we widely.
Not the criteria of.
Well, if you can't do that, then I guess it doesn't work, but.
Is that a neighborhood affordable subdivision or is that expired? I guess.
In my opinion, it was developed and allowed to have housing, being developed with lots that smaller than would otherwise. Lots don't get bigger when they expire, so.
Okay.
There we go. And therefore it's still was developed as a neighborhood affordable housing. So that distance that that would be how I, well, it is how I read the regulation. I could be, you know, the commission could disagree with me or an attorney could give the argument differently than that. But my opinion, those lots are smaller and the lots, just because the timing expires, the lots didn't grow to full size.
They didn't expand overnight.
Right.
So it's still considerable. It's still.
That does sound. And I mean, just like kind of something similar to affordable, just maybe kick that can down the road is, did you consider maybe an open space development here?
I mean, so so I did, and frankly, it's economically feasible. It's ma- makes better economic, I should say, it makes more economical sense for my pocketbook. I'm not, I guess I'm trying to be a little altruistic at the same time, if that helps, like the people, you know, I think there's a need. And so I focused in on that. Because, you know, I I I was, I was content until this commission said, go back to the drawing board with the conventional subdivision. And when I went back to the drawing board and I made those calls and then people said, wait, there's no affordable component, the neighbors? I said, no. That's not what we thought. Okay. And then I I sat with Maureen, like, you know, there isn't, I mean, I was, like I said, it was financially feasible at five lots if you can offer some some additional bonus and.
Steve Biella, do you have anything you wanted to add at this time? Only because you're seated.
No, nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, Brian, too. I think then the open space you need to update anchors. That was another.
It's withdrawn.
It's withdrawn. All right, so thank you. You bet.
Good night. Okay, next up is the proposed text amendments for or of F H I Studio at the direction of the Berlin Economic Development Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the Berlin zoning regulations relating to commercial zoning in. Let me see, there's three segments to it. It's going to be B T one, B T two, and S P D D. And there's a lot of other stuff that's written here, but and then C C D two, which is the Kensington Village overlay. And then the zoning regulations and map amendments for elimination of the S P D D overlay and the S P D D two overlay relating to the definitions and amendments for the bulk table requirements. Okay, it's a lot of stuff.
Just to to start out, so you'll notice on the agenda, I then I took each of those zone sections and split them up into item one, two, three, four, and five. So that if you chose, we noticed it as a public hearings, not a public hearing, but it's public hearings because it's multiple amendments. If you choose to take up each zone separately as an item, it will, you know, end up with you may having some overlapping presentation and discussion. But it may allow you to chunk it. If so to say, speak, you know, you're talking about B T one, you're only talking about B T one, you're not then going on to talking about the Kensington overlay. You know, and and so that is my suggestion that you might consider doing it and it doing them sort of one at a time, each one, the way written on the agenda and the way it was, you know, as a whole noticed was including the definitions and the bulk tables that are related to each one in each section. So that would be my suggestion. It's up to you if you want to have one single public hearing or separate out each of the, basically, it's the pages of your packet or the clusters of your packet by zone. And then we do have Francesco here to do the presentation on the application. And while there's been discussion, I think many people in the room, there's some E D C members in the room as well, as our economic development director, you know, are familiar with the application, but this is actually the the public hearing on it. So there may be unfamiliar participants who are engaged because of the notice.
All right, so we'd want to do this just section by section, see how far we go, or do you want to just look at the whole thing in general and see what concerns that you have? Or we can turn to the public and see if they have any input if they're up to speed. What do you think?
I think section by section wouldn't hurt.
Okay, any agreed, section by section?
I'm just questioning, B T one, B T two, maybe we have able to combine, but because the the changes are almost
All right.
So so that just.
You better use your microphone because nobody will hear you.
Yeah, it echoes what I'm worried about.
That's okay, I'll turn mine off.
The B two, one, B two, two. There's some overlapping issue, I think, or or
Well, the B.
Changes.
The B T one and B T two are the ones basically on the Berlin Turnpike.
Right.
I mean, that's what they are. And so they're across the street from each other.
Yeah.
And is that's the one on Berlin Turnpike to Middletown Road. And then the other section is across where the old chocolate place used to.
I just, I just, we wanted to combine those two together because they're closely related. If not, we can do it one at a time. I don't know.
I mean, I I think probably if we have concerns for the B T one and two, I think they might actually surface no matter which one we're talking to. So I guess we could do that. You know, just look at the B T one and two only right now and see if we can try to focus in on that. Does that sound valid to the rest of the commission? Okay, okay, Brian, Andrea. All right. All right. So let's talk about the B T one and two zones. And I know that these have been manipulated several times over the course of the years. And that we're trying to find, I think, a resolve that will help the property owners that find themselves with not so so much property but located on the the turnpike where they're not really covered by and in other words, the property is owned by them, but it's not really useful to them at this point because it's either it's too small for what they want to do or and and basically that's what it comes down to is they don't have enough property. And I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to find a compromise, some way to help them. But we're also trying to be, or at least I'm I'm going to say for myself now. I'm also trying to be thoughtful for surrounding established communities that may be there. I mean, I noticed that one of the things, and I think I think I'll just lead off with this, one of the things that we talk about is car washes. And I know that there's a proposal that car washes normally take two acres. And the proposal is to bring it down to one point four. And I and I've thought about that and I've thought about these. And I, and I've thought about that, and I've thought about these specific properties that are, you know, in the BT one zone, or the B, because that's the one that goes with Middletown Road, that's the BT one, I'm going by memory now, but it seems to me that if you had, as I've looked at the different car washes that are available in Cromwell up in Newington, things that are on the turnpike, I find that they usually have the vacuums out at the road, they have the washing facilities in the back, and they have the cloths and everything, so people, and you get multiple cars in there. And, but I've also noticed that there seems to be almost an endless flow of noise that comes out of those facilities. Whether it's somebody who's vacuuming their car, just happens to be playing their radio like super loud. And alls I can think of is that I'm sitting on the back porch on the Worthington Ridge, not that I live on the ridge, but I'm sitting on my back porch, and alls I want to do is have like just a pleasant afternoon reading a book, and then I'm harassed continually by noise of a car wash. And so I sometimes wonder that maybe the 1.4 acres is not good enough, maybe it should be the two acres, if not more, to put some sort of buffer between that and, and the residential community. But that, that's just, um, something that hopped out at me, so I'll start with that, and I'm sure others will follow in. So, okay, I put my foot in the water. Who else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, we have Francisco, um, our consultant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do a summary of the changes for the purposes of the public hearing.
Oh, absolutely.
Get it, um, started so that anyone who's unfamiliar as comments are made.
You should have said something. I thought you were all waiting for somebody to lead off.
Good that things, you know, we can adjust things at any time.
All right, well, there you go. Francisco, I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'm going to just enjoy the presentation.
You're in the hot seat, sorry.
Yeah, there you go. She threw you under the bus.
She did.
All right, well, it's good to see you all, and I don't so much, uh, have a presentation as I have just an introduction and to provide some context for you all and for members of the public that may be attending. Uh, the purpose of these proposed amendments is to update and modernize your commercial zoning regulations to better respond to and meet the realities of the marketplace today. Uh, the retail office service market has changed a lot over the past several years. Uh, COVID certainly exerted some influences on the retail market. And, uh, the zoning regulations, for the most part, have not changed with very few exceptions, uh, with respect to these zoning districts and these commercial zones. Uh, so we're trying to get the zoning caught up to where the market is. Chris Edge has been participating in this process and has been an advocate for it, and that's because he has his finger on the pulse of the local economic development market. Uh, and so he, he's brought a lot of matters to our attention. Uh, we've worked with staff and it's been before you multiple times to discuss, uh, some of these items and these ideas. And we've developed recommended amendments that we feel are very conservative, uh, responsible and responsive to the needs of property owners and to the current market. Um, zoning regulations aren't intended to be static and to never change. That's why you have the authority to change them. Um, the, the advice being, uh, given, delivered to you and being presented in the form of these recommended amendments comes from, uh, staff and the Economic Development Commission that does have some expertise and interest in this area. Uh, as well as my team and my staff, that it works with multiple communities across Connecticut doing exactly this type of work. So we feel what has been recommended will serve you very well. Um, and that it will, uh, is consistent with your plan of conservation and development, which FHI Studio worked with you and many, if not most, of you in the room to craft and develop. It, it is not only consistent with that, but it, it is following the recommendations of that plan. Uh, so with that being said, with respect to the BT one zone, uh, the changes we've made or, or the recommended amendments that we put forth in front of you are intended to better respond to property conditions and lot sizes and orientation up and down the turnpike. A- as you're well aware, the properties, uh, the lots are very small, most of them are non-conforming with respect to the current lot size requirement, uh, which means they're very limited in what they can do with the property. And it's not a good practice for zoning to create a, a high percentage of non-conformities. It's a best practice that most properties aren't conforming. And so we're trying to, uh, make more properties conforming to incentivize investment, redevelopment and infill development up and down the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, we've, we've made some other, uh, modest, I think, recommended amendments, such as reducing the front yard requirement. And that is owing to the fact that Berlin Turnpike has incredibly wide right of way that extends well into what most of us perceive to be the actual front yards of businesses, which is actually the state's right of way. Um, so with, with all that being said, the intention of these amendments are to enable good things to happen up and down the turnpike. And with respect to the BT one, we, we have not recommended, uh, very many changes to the uses that are permitted. Uh, we've recommended, uh, eliminating a couple of uses, which you have plenty of other space for in town, such as lumberyards. And en- enabling clean contractors, uh, and we've provided a definition for what that is. Outside of that, we've recommended very few changes to the uses that would be permitted in the BT one. Relative to the BT two, where that was a good part of our emphasis, was, was and is introducing new uses not currently permitted in the BT two, and changing some of the permit requirements to ideally reduce some of the special permit requirements down to site plan application requirements. And all for the exact same purposes, uh, which is to incentivize and encourage reinvestment along the Berlin Turnpike.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Anyone? Joe? Uh, well, we're talking BT one, BT two. Is there anyone from the public? Oh, Mr. Edge.
Good evening, Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. Uh, I'm actually here on behalf of, um, Dave's here, who's the chairman of economic development. Uh, he's honored to make this evening, he's taking care of his, uh, mom. He does send his regards and asks that I share his thoughts. Chairman Veely, Vice Chairman Dorsey, and members of Planning and Zoning Commission. The different text amendments and modifications up for public hearing this evening were put together for almost a year of effort Francisco at FHI Studios, Chris Edge, Jim Mahoney, Maureen Juisty, and Alexa Gorlick. These recommendations this evening have been carefully created and thoroughly discussed, debated, and analyzed in order to target specific areas and zones that have seen little or no growth in the past. Excuse me. Future growth in the Berlin Turnpike from Route nine to the Merton Town Line was a great area of focus. Fortunately, in this area, abundant land and sites are available and ripe for potential development. And as such, tonight continues our journey to facilitate positive change in specific areas where little or no development has occurred in many years. In closing, we appreciate of all the work done to date, and thank the Planning and Zoning Commission in advance for their upcoming review and discussions. Well, the Economic Development Commission supports these proposed changes and recommendations. We obviously trust your abilities, vision, and analysis of recommendations, and thus your final decisions. Please, please reach out to myself, Chris Edge, or any EDC member should any questions arise. Thank you for your time and consider on, and on these matters. Dave's here.
Thank you, Chris. Brian?
Maureen, could you do me a favor, and could you pull up a zoning map that shows where the BT one and BT two zone is um, on the screen? Just so, um, because I know we.
Have had, so the easiest one to pull up is the GIS, which doesn't have all the amendments on it, so as we go through, I can tell you where they've been amended. But we'd have to pull up the individual sheets for each section.
Okay.
But we can, there's.
Yeah.
A portion we can do, that you can.
Because I know that we can, I do agree that noise is a concern, especially near residential.
We've been working on getting that updated properly on the, they are keeping problems with it. And getting done accurately for the amendments that happened along the turnpike. You'll recall, um, uh, so I'll, I'll cover a couple of them, the BT one at the very north end of town. Um, then there's, um, a section at the corner of Demming Road, um, on the southeast corner, that was just the development you just approved that had been rezoned to BT one not very long ago. BT two is further down the road, where Top Cat is on Demming Road and that little plaza, that's BT two. BT one is actually the corner lots in those lots, um, there, uh, to the Adios Parcel and all along the left-hand side on the west side, going north. So all on the west side is, um, BT one as well. Um, then moving down along the turnpike, as you come, there's a small section that's CCD near the, um, right near the Mill Street, you know, that has the different zoning. And, but then as you go south of the Route nine interchange, um, you'll recall you rezoned several of the properties on the west side there from underlying zone BT two to BT one. Last, in the last two years. Um, you want, it, it may help, and then going further south, um, the whole section. Come up with my actual map.
Reporting in progress.
Somebody. Um, and then as you go to south on the turnpike from Sage Park, just in the vicinity of Sage Park, north of that, and south of that is all BT one. And then when you get down closer to, um, Silver Lake and, um, where, um, south of Orchard Road, it turns to BT two. Those red zones, so as you're looking at the map, um, the red is commercial, you know, several different types of commercial zoning, but the, along the corridor there of the Berlin Turnpike, a lot of those are BT one and BT two.
In that in BT one, that the lot sizes are properly smaller than the lots found in BT two.
Um.
In other words, yeah, some of these people have like point six or point nine.
More larger sized lots in the BT two.
Yeah.
Don't know that you'd find that there aren't still a lot of non-conforming, small lots in BT two as well.
Yeah, because I'll be honest with you, if you have like a point nine acres or point six, I, I, I'm I'm hard pressed to think what you could put on that. Uh, it's almost like they need more property. I, I'm not sure that we can help those people with smaller lots. The, I mean, like the half acre lots and stuff.
Yeah, well, some of them would have the ability, because it is a non-conforming lot size to, or they already have uses on some lots that are, are the smaller acreage.
Yeah.
Um, that a little. Um, Francisco or Jim, uh, we have an analysis of, we do, we, I mean, at one point, we did do some analysis of lot sizes. That was some time ago. I'm wondering if either of you can think of where I can quickly pull that up.
I, I can share my screen if enabled.
You should be.
I have that file ready to share.
Oh, okay. Daniel? Are we new?
Here, here we go.
Knew we had one.
All right, I, I'm going to enlarge this a little bit. It's a big file, and we, this is not work that we did. This is work that was done on behalf of the town, I, I believe by New England Geo, but was provided to us. And it was, it was done, uh, about, about a year ago, March twenty twenty four. Uh, so the smallest lots, this goes from green being the smallest lots, less than one acre, like green lime green, one to two acre lots are the darker green, which means that anything is green, that's green on this map, is non-conforming with the lot size requirement for the BT, and these, these are all primarily BT and some of the other commercial zones, but just the commercial zones up and down the turnpike. Uh, anything that is, uh, yellow is more than two acres, and, uh, orange, more than five, red, more than ten. So you do have, like I said, everything in green is, is less than an acre, is less than two acres, excuse me, and everything in lime green is less than one acre.
Yeah.
You know, to the point, I think John makes a very good point, where even if we rezoned one acre, that doesn't do a lot for people to have, you know, point eight acres. But it, it does, it does lower the standard, meaning, uh, you could potentially combine with the property next door that only has half an acre or point acre, point, and then it, it's a lot easier to get over that threshold to do something with the property. Requires the aggregation of fewer properties. And so I think from that perspective, it remains beneficial.
Okay.
So I think that was part of the reasoning behind going under to two acres because of just the huge amount of green. And, and the fact that the two acres does because challenging, because you are correct, Chairwoman, that really small lots, yes. It's when you have like 1.7 next to 1.5 where it becomes really challenging. Um, but the gentleman had wanted to come up for one second, just talk on one particular point. I don't want to, just, he just, he just had one particular item that just gus, I just wanted to have him come up if you could, just.
Okay, well, it is a public.
Thank you very much, Chris. So, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chairwoman, uh, so for the record, Peter Yaski. I own a small company called Connecticut Valley Development, five zero two Halliday Avenue West, Southfield, Connecticut. Uh, reason I'm here tonight, and I want to thank Chris for inviting me and, and, um, suggesting I come and speak to you is, um, I am in support of the text amendments that are being proposed this evening. So my firm is a, uh, preferred developer, so I work with retailers that come into the state, come into new areas of the state, help them get established, and basically what we do is we handle everything from initial site selection all the way through building permit. Um, one of the retailers I, I do work with is a, uh, a major, um, a national yet, but it's certainly a regional chain, actually based in Connecticut, but a regional chain of express car washes. Um, and we've been looking, uh, to grow, particularly in Hartford County market, and I've been assisting them with that. And I had a bunch of notes here tonight, and I'm kind of, I'm going to jump around, because what I wrote yesterday, I heard some, some other comments, uh, comments that I want to address, but um, essentially what we've been doing is we, we, we've been formulating a comprehensive strategy for their growth and their expansion in Hartford County. We've looked at multiple markets, we're working in multiple markets, and when we go out and look for sites, we look really for two things. We look for established retail corridors, and we look for traffic, and fortunately for Berlin, you folks have both of that, uh, specifically speaking about the Berlin Turnpike.
Much traffic, I think.
Well. Um, so we've, we've identified a quarter of the Berlin Turnpike in the BT one zone that we would very much like to be in. Unfortunately, uh, when we started peeling back your regulations, we noticed right away that everything that we looked at that was on the market, and even some stuff that wasn't on the market, and we got the name and addresses of some property owners and spoke to. And we got the name and addresses and property owners and spoke to them would not meet the threshold requirement. They were under two acres. In most cases, they were over one point four acres. They were one and a half, one point seven. You could probably guess a few of the properties I'm talking about. There's one out there that I think is one point nine five acres, right? But it's, it's just under that two acre threshold, so. By your current regs, it would not allow our use. Um. So when we look at sites, so I've worked with these, these folks and in my, my past, I worked, uh, I built forty six Cumberland Farms stores. Primarily in Connecticut, all over New England, primarily in Connecticut, and a lot of those had a car wash component too. So when we look at sites, we look at four things, right? The first thing we look at paramount is safety, safety of site circulation. Is the site large enough to safely handle the projected traffic, circulate the vehicles on site, enter and exit the site safely? Second thing is obviously ease of in- ingress and egress. So we look at the state road or the town road, and in this case it would be a state road. Are the vehicles able to safely enter and exit roadway? And we work with the state on that, as you can imagine. The third thing we look at is the volume of vehicle queuing, meaning how many. Right, the queue length on the site needed to safely accommodate projected traffic that we're gonna have. And then the fourth thing we look at is adequate vacuum space, as you, as you alluded to, Madam Chair. Um, making sure that we have enough to serve our customers, but not too much where it becomes a sea of concrete, and I'll get into that in a minute. So my client, um, and I can't speak for everybody out there, but my client's sweet spot and it's a pretty standardized thing. There's actually companies out there now that are. Cut rolling out really plans that you could buy and basically it's an equipment package that fits in the car wash tunnel. So uh, my, my client's sweet spot is typically a hundred and twenty foot tunnel with twenty plus vacuum spaces. And then, you know, however many employee spaces we need on the site, usually it's four to five. Um, that's what we've seen pretty much industry wide. It equates to about a thirty, five hundred square foot, give or take, building on the site. In all the sites that we've worked on, and like I said, we've, you know, my, my client's been established since the sixties. They have sites that are about half an acre. I'm not suggesting that's the right size, but of all the sites that we've worked on for this new modern building. The smallest one I think we're on is an acre and we made that work. We had to pinch some of the parking a little bit. Uh, I can tell you of the five sites that we have, four sites, excuse me, that we have under contract right now, none of them are over two acres. We've been able to, and again, we have a registered professional engineer, obviously, that's doing these layouts. We've been able to safely accommodate that on sites. Really in that acre and a half sweet spot kind of range. Um, when we go over two acres, what it does, obviously, it it. It gives us either two things, uh, either extra green space, which is great, but you know, that has to be maintained and that cuts into the economic feasibility of the site. Or extra impervious space, which also has to be maintained and plowed and everything, but we really can't use that. We just don't do the volumes. You know, this isn't California, this isn't Florida. We don't do the volumes. We're not processing so many cars that we need forty or fifty, sixty spaces. So it just becomes added, added maintenance and added work. Um, so a little bit about what the industry looks like now. So I I heard some comments about noise and I certainly wanted to address that. So, you know, the modern express car wash, um. Really in the last ten years has taken off and it's gotten the in- interest of Wall Street. Uh, in fact, the folks I work with are backed by a Wall Street firm. There's, there's been a lot of investment into this space. And the reason is, uh, well, there's a, there's a number of reasons, but one of the reasons is the technology has really come a long way. So what we're seeing is the, the new car washes compared to the old stuff, they're really a lot more efficient. They're much quieter and I'll speak to that. Uh, at the end in a minute. They're more environmentally friendly. We reclaim a lot of the water that we use. We're not dumping everything into the sewer system. They have reclaimed systems that they can actually recycle water on site now. So the technology has really come a long, long way in the last, um, you know, ten or fifteen years. And these facilities are not meant to be your classic twenty-four hour. It's open all night. You can go there at two in the morning and play your radio and vacuum your car. My client and most of the, most of the people, in fact, all the people I know in this space have set hours and they're pretty typical with the rest of the business hours throughout the community. So that's one thing I wanted to, to bring up to your attention too. Um, you know, they're all subscription based models or most of them are, meaning. You know, we can, you can get your car washed individually, but primarily we like to sell you a monthly membership. And what that does, it just helps us predict our revenue, uh, and it also helps us predict our traffic. So we know based on that membership count, and we've seen this, and obviously we have facilities statewide, we know. What a typical car wash is gonna do and we can tailor our site plan and our, and our needs according to that. Um, and I can tell you again, as I opened with, we don't have a site in Connecticut, in my respectful opinion, that requires over two acres. And I'll, I'll close with a few things that I wanted to just touch on. So, um, obviously I've been doing this for about fifteen years. I was a retail broker before this. I think as your consultant alluded to, you know, the landscape in retail has really changed. When I got into this, it was, the big box stores were king. Soft goods, clothing, you know, unfortunately, we've seen Connecticut, a lot of bankruptcies, right? So what we have now is we've got the service industries, the restaurants, you know, the, the retail medical, um. Filling that void and quite honestly, it's the Amazon proof stuff, right? It's the stuff we, we can't get online. So that's the stuff, that's the kind of things that are sticking around, if you will. Um, and I put car wash in that obviously too, so. Um, so why I bring all this up, um, again, we, number one, we'd very much like to invest in Berlin. But number two, um, and I saw this a lot when I was working with Cumberland Farms. When you have what, what to an outsider looking in, at least looks like an arbitrary zoning requirement, right? We can't, we can't just make so, it's two acres because why? You know, we, we, we can't, and I'm sure there's an explanation and someone could probably tell me that tonight, but. When we look at things like that and, and with Cumberland Farms, we saw this a lot with fuel. You see this a lot where you have regs that were. That made sense in, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna pick on any particular towns, not Berlin, but there are some in southern New Haven County that. You know, they haven't touched their gas regs since the sixties and they were written for metal gas tanks essentially. When gas tanks leaked, ruptured, exploded, and that technology's come a long way. Uh, I'm not here to talk about gas tonight, but, but my point is, um. When we look at these regs and we're looking at communities and we've got six towns surrounding Berlin. Choose from and, you know, some of them have their zoning issues too. We, we tend to, being retailers, focus on the. The path of least resistance and and our investors demand to. Thank you. Oh, no problem. Um, so when we look at, obviously, when we look at communities, right, we, we want to open these facilities as fast as we can. So, you know, just by, by habit, I think a lot of retailers just say, okay, this is the town that looks to have the path of least resistance. Um, let's, let's talk to them. Um, the, the last two things I want to bring up is, you know, under your regs. And I'm not a land use attorney, but I've been doing enough of these presentations that. If you were to drop the two acre requirement or or reduce the two acre requirement, a car wash would still be a special permit use, if I'm correct. So you would still have the opportunity to have myself or another applicant come to you. Apply your special permit standards, prove to you why we think this is a good location, a safe location. A location that's not gonna cause any detrimental impacts to any of the butters, neighbors in particular, noise and things like that. So there's, there's, you still have that, that layer of protection afforded to you, but with the two acre requirement. Unfortunately, what it does is it really doesn't even give us, aside from tonight, the opportunity to even have this conversation. Because our, our application, if we were to go to one of the, we're looking at three sites and they're all, again, they're all under that two acre. The, the, the application will be dead on arrival, um, in the planning office. So we wouldn't even have the opportunity to have this and I can, you know, and I'm not going to tonight, believe me, but we can go on and on about vacuum technology. And how you can stand next to some of these new vacuums and they're whisper quiet and the majority of sound emits from a car wash actually out of the exit is where we have. The most issue with sound and that emits onto the turnpike in this, most cases, a building would be oriented that way. And we can control that with doors and other devices. So there's a whole host of screening measures we can do, sound mitigation measures that. You know, again, if we could come in under a special permit applicator, have the opportunity to discuss and if it passes your test, great, if not. So be it. So, uh, in closing, I just want to thank Chris for giving me the opportunity to speak and for calling me and letting me know this was happening tonight, because that was very helpful. Thank you. Yep. Oh, yeah.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the commission regarding uh, the BT one, BT two zones?
Emma Bailey, can I answer a question you had and it was a really quick cursory? Like, let's pick a couple of properties, but just so you can get uh, an idea in your minds as to what you see on different sized properties. Um, I just did a little um. Poking on the GIS, so the gas station that's opposite Orchard Road. And you're all very familiar with it. I, I hesitate to say the wrong names, so that is one point six acres. So that's about one and a half acres. Um, the Steakhouse and Pizza Place Parcel, that was where Centerpools was.
Um, Barrow and Fine, or it used to be Encore.
Uh, that's point eight, three acres for those, those two buildings with shared parking on that lot. Um, I didn't write what this was, fourteen ninety-two Berlin Turnpike is one point six two, but I didn't write what, oh, that's the, I think that's.
That's the former car, that's the former, um, uh, it was a car dealership, then it was a union, then it was the.
Oh, the Dawson.
Compressor, now it's a fire suppression system.
Yeah, that's next.
Is what I recalled it, um, as things that I thought you would find. That's one point six two, so just over one and a half. Um, Clara's Castle, it was at one time USA Baby, so it's the taller building that's, you know, near Pine Loft. Um, one point oh five, so one acre. Um, Pine Loft itself is point nine, two acres. Um, and the liquor store that's opposite Worthington Ridge, if you're going further north. That liquor store on the east side is one point three five. That's as far up the turnpike I got so far. But those are just kind of examples of the, the size and, and parking, you know, some of those are not. Um, ancient, so the parking was established in a more modern. Needs, more suitable, developed that way. So just an example, no.
Okay.
Any one way or another, just.
And I just wanted to highlight a couple of small things here, um, that, um, in both the BT one and the BT two. I think, um, the minimum front yard from the fifty to the twenty-five feet would be a major benefit. Because again, the, the state right away is anything from twenty to fifty feet and it really just negatively affects folks, still have twenty-five.
Oh, yeah.
Just, and it's, it's a challenge, um, again, the consideration to, to go down from two acres. Um, and then if, if the one point four didn't make sense with the car wash, potentially one point five. Um, but I know particularly the one point nine, six acre parcel. That's right in the middle of almost everything happening right now. That's one that's very hot and I don't know if it's a car wash or not, but the two acres has been de- challenging there. One of the things, and it's interesting you mentioned fourteen ninety-two, uh, Marine, uh, which is. The use that was allowed there previously and now is under something that we're looking at, that I think is important in the BT two, which is golds vehicles and equipment sales and service. So the fire suppression system, the air compressors, they don't do sales out the front door. But they do have folks that are out doing all the work in the field and basically these are really wonderful companies that have created careers. Uh, in the area. The last thing I'll mention is, um. I think we've seen what has happened with the parcel that Pierre Bennerup used to do growing on, that's now where Priority Electric is. Um, I think Paul has done a really great job. Um, I think, um, potentially. Serious consideration of that for the, for the BT one and BT two zones, only because I think that. We have enough firms that are growing enough that I think, if, again, if done well, limited to certain number of types of firms, HVAC plumbing. I think if you look at what Jason Porcell did right here by Town Hall with his building. Um, these can be rather amazing and if we can get rid of some things that maybe aren't as wonderful. Like we knows that those are, um, with the clean contractors, it would be wonderful because many of them, and why I like them, is when they grow. Everything on a roof is a career. They get fifty to hundred thousand dollar Marshall trucks, usually from Tascas. And if they like us enough, they put Berlin CT on the side, which means we have cars around the state promoting us. I know that last part's kind of silly, but when companies do grow, uh, they add to the tax rolls greatly. Yet it's a lot more than just necessarily the five thousand square feet. It's those trucks and it's the employees that are gonna go to our restaurants. So that's kind of it for me, but thank you guys so very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Are there uses, um, that haven't been listed here that you think would be. Worthwhile to add?
The uses that are not listed here for BT one and BT two, you mean? Um, I think the majority of them we have looked at here, um. I think there are some uses potentially that could work. The, the problem is, is there's, there really aren't any lots big enough. Good example would be, let's say, um, assisted living, something like that. I don't think you'd be able to put enough parcels together for that in the BT one or BT two. Where I think that would make more sense in like an SPD D. I think there's anything else that comes to mind that we don't have. I think we've covered the majority of it, because I know we, we kind of looked at it and which ones made sense, which ones didn't, getting rid of ones like lumberyard. Really didn't make a lot of sense, um. Oh, yes, 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 thank you. Oh, um, so, uh, yeah, one of the things we're looking at was, um. Some of the things, uh, arts oriented, so, um, in studio, things like that, just to make sure that, that language is clear. Because I know we'd had that issue before with it not being clearly written. Um, there's probably a couple others within that same thing. I don't know. Whether or not we have martial arts listed, but those are the businesses that I would see potentially could grow. Particularly if you're looking at the southern portion of the turnpike. Uh, because that tends to be more of the smaller, smaller retailer spaces, um, the like. I mean, you have the space next to the package store at. Like, I, not the address, but I believe it's was a dirt floor. Um, the other piece as well, I know next to Dunkin' Donuts. Um, he has some vacant buildings and we've been talking to him about some of the other uses as well. But nothing, nothing beyond that I can see. If there is something, I can definitely come back, let you know. I don't know if you have a particular thought on something.
Uh, I think as I look at the list, I'm trying to, um, imagine possible businesses. And, um, I just, um, I'm, I feel like I'm drawing a blank. I wanna, um, be mindful of all different types of businesses that might enhance that area.
Of course, well.
Um, and since that's what you're dealing with.
Well, I, I can actually give you one, one interesting example. So it's a company I've been working with. And so they have one business in Ma- uh, Middletown, one in Berlin, they'd like to be under one roof. Um, they essentially, I believe, would fit under the, um, boat vehicles and equipment sales and service. So what their company does is, so let's say you buy a, uh, mini, well, called minivans. The, kind of the Amazon truck, the one you see in your neighborhood. What they'll do is they'll take that truck, that vehicle, I should say, I think it's a crossover. And they'll modify it inside so that it fits your business. So if you're an HVAC guy or a plumbing guy, he'll redo the entire inside of the building. So he's not an automotive guy, he's not doing any repairs, but he's the type of guy that would be a great fit for the turnpike. Because he has some customers, but not a lot. He really needs the visibility, because he's talking to the contractors, the other stuff, the other folks. Because that's really his business is, how do I take a vehicle that may not have been built for this, make it work for you at that point? Um, and that's a company that we've been working with for a while and the hope would be is, again, i- if the, um. Was it the boat vehicle and equipment sales and services added to BT two, I, I have a lot that I have been mentioning to him, he's been looking at for a while. Um, and it's just one of these things that the location of the lot is in a pure commercial area. Um, it actually would be kind of in the midst of the, um. Where the hotels are down there, where actually the Hawthorne, if you haven't been in lately, they've actually done a great job inside. I was at an event the other day, um. We're starting to see some vibrancy down there again, which I think is good. I think it's also important that we look at having more varied uses. Because I can't say necessarily what is coming, but I know what tends to be coming is a little different than normal. Which again, is more of the complimentary stuff that helps businesses like this gentleman. I mean, I think that's a good example, in my mind, a great business that would work in town, because we do have so many, um, individuals who, again. May work for somebody to do their own thing on a Saturday or Sunday and then over time, launch into their own space. Which again, the hope would be is when you're looking at the application on April third, that's exactly what he's gonna be offering. At, at Zero Fortrod Road, which is those like industrial spaces for growing businesses.
Thank you.
I wish I had a whole laundry list, but that's the one that comes to mind anyway.
We, just if I may add, um, you know, we have an inquiry that came in after. All the vetting of this for another use. It hasn't been completely vetted as to what zone. And, and how they're talking about coming in for a, a text amendment with regard to that. Um, and it's, would complement another use in town, um, a business already, they need more acreage. Um, so it would be a separated site. Um, but, so there are, I don't want to give the impression that we've. You know, don't expect another change in the next, you know, excessive period of time. Because we are constantly getting inquiries and this has been in progress. this has been in progress over the course of, you know, almost a year, nine, nine months, six months, nine months. Um, so it's what has been called to the town's attention over that time period, as we know, economics are changing very rapidly.
And Maureen.
So we're getting different.
Want to go into that any further, or I don't know if that makes sense or not, maybe.
I don't know if it's appropriate right now because they couldn't, um, in my opinion, the one that hasn't been analyzed.
Yep.
Um, as far as a text amendment, but it wasn't noticed for additional use. So it's just doesn't seem, it's off topic.
Okay.
Off topic, but it is yet another use, there's always uses that, who knew? Who knew that was a use? Or somebody comes in and we're like, wow, no, we don't address that in our list, huh, isn't that? Um, don't we wonder why, but if it's not there, it's not there. And sometimes we find out why because you might have looked at it twenty years ago and but sometimes it.
Let me, um, let me ask a question, that's, I think this is on the BT two zone for special permit uses. There's one that float, that's, there's two that are, I'm sort of curious about, one is for a public transportation facility, including bus stations and bus shelters. I'm, I'm not sure what that is, is that like DADCO moving or?
That, that would likely be the Department of Transportation, um, now that we have worked with DOT, actually I did for two years to move the bus line. Um, we want to have it in there in case we can find some spots on the turnpike to be able to have employees dropped off. Um, that's really what that would be, it would be essentially be a DOT bus stop, but it may be run by a DAC corporate transportation, which is what they have done, which is outsource the local routes to local companies.
So it would be a building?
You, so that would be in, um.
I'm not sure, I I guess I'm confused as to what it is and why it's there.
Kind of, um, like a transportation center, um, the fast track. Um.
Oh, God.
It's in New Bre, and you know, it's a, it's a depot in a way, but it's also, um, a facility that maybe, you know, varying scale. You know, they come in in a different, different look than that, and I did kind of hesitate on the fast track, but sometimes in the cities, you see them in pretty small areas. Um, where it's a bus depot, so you have an actual place that people go to get on the Greyhound bus to go a long distance and, and not to pick on, and not to, you know, tell any particular business, but Greyhound, everybody knows what Greyhound buses are.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So I'm using that as an example.
Yeah.
I just want to note that those, the, the items that are in regular print and not otherwise called out are uses currently allowed in the zone, not proposed to be changed, and that, um, I don't think, that's not proposed to be changed, is it?
I don't know, some.
No, and yeah, thank you, Maureen, for clarifying, that, that is an existing permitted use. A special permit use, so it's not anything we've introduced or that we've recommended changing in any way.
I just didn't know what it was, isn't that silly of me?
Uh, and we don't do that regularly.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times when I, um.
Because I would think.
Uh, regulation is implemented, the common terminology for a certain use is, that's what you've adopted in your regulations or any town has, and forty years later, it may
Mm-hmm.
Look a lot different.
Yeah.
Or you may use different terminology, I'm, I tell this story too often. But when I was here not very long, I was asked about a laundromat or a dry cleaner, and I found laundrette in the regulations. Whoa, this is a laundrette, I didn't know what the nuanced difference between a laundry, a lingerie and a laundromat and a dry cleaning facility, like how are those? They're listed, all those uses are listed in the recs in different places. Kind of bring them all and decide which ones are the same and which ones are actually a different use. Clearly, a dry cleaner is, they have the chemicals, they do different things, a lot of laundries have dry cleaning. But some of them just pick it up, they don't, they just take it, they have dry cleaning in their name, they don't, they're not actually a dry cleaner. So, but the laundrette, is that a term anybody really uses in twenty twenty-five? No.
It is, unfortunately. Okay.
So anyway, those uses that aren't actually called out as being moved or changed are staying the same in the recs. They're us.
I just, I just sort of question the, I mean, I know it's existing in our like regs, but I wanted to question it because it just seems to me that to put a public transportation facility on the turnpike, I would think that would be more feasible to be near a train station or something. As opposed to out in the middle of the turnpike, I just, I'm like, okay, so you're going to let these people off? And where are they going to go? I, I don't know, I, okay, I just thought, anyway, I know that I don't want to spend the whole evening on this, but go ahead, Tim.
Okay. Uh, I, I, uh, my speaker that we had here, uh, I thought you were talking to my career, uh, from Cumberland Farms to uh, commercial, uh, real estate to, to development, uh, that's the line of my knowledge, uh. The car wash to one point four. Okay, I don't know where the one four four came from, but, uh, you know, my concern was from two acres to one acre, uh, in the, in the regs. Uh, and there was a confirmation to one and a half, so if the car wash is on one and a half instead of one point four, there's really not going to make too much difference. Uh, and looking at the lots, as they had them up on the green and the yellow up there, okay. Uh, most of them are uh, one acre, a couple smaller ones, but, you know, one, then it comes two acres or bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and the, uh, when Maureen brought up the, some sites that are developed right now, Ashley's bringing up those sites of the the strip joint, whatever the name was, uh,
Cool.
Uh, whatever it is now, uh, you know, and the other one down, down to the gas station and the one next to it, the cat, the uh, uh, those are all one point five or a little bit bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, and that's where I came in with the, the one point five uh, of the, is what kind of buildings can we get on one point five or one acre? And the, the ones that he, she brought up all were one and a half or.
Some were, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, um, one, a few of them were one and a half, one was one, and a couple were just under one.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so, so I'm looking at the size, basically the size of the building that could be put on it, and the one and a half ones and the, and that they brought up as a point is a good sized development. Rentable, good sized development. Uh, that's why I'm on, on the one point five, I would rather have the two, but the one point five is a common, uh, uh, compromise, it will also, uh, address the car wash uh, thing. And so, you know, I'm just, uh, the, the other thing is that, uh, was the item said was put on a clean contractor, uh. I think that has to be more defined what a clean contractor is. Contractors is a big general, a term. Uh, is it's, uh, like the compressor place? You know, and everything's inside and then they pull out in the morning. I don't think it's a problem.
Hmm.
You know, with the contractor that wants to store something outside, that's a problem. Uh, so that, that's, I took that, that question. Uh, motor vehicle, eliminated motor vehicle, lumberyards, religious uses, I don't know what the reason why the, their move that is, but, uh, you know, and mo- mo- motor vehicle or lumberyard, I understand that, uh, in the BT one. Uh, BT two, BT two, uh, I don't see too much that I, I check, except the lot size on the BT two. Uh, you know, so, so it's a, it is a, you know.
Yeah, there was a, okay. All right, and anyone else?
Can we? Well, I, I, I kind of thought the BT one and two would take probably the longest time, we might have re, I, I'm sorry, I didn't readjust the order, um, I just kind of, unless Francisco wants to take over and might do it more smoothly than me, but I'm going to try. So in that, the sections on BT one and BT two, um, just reminding you that you'll notice the reasoning was all provided, you know, obviously in this, um, in the description. But if you turn to some of the uses, and I think he said this, but I'm just reiterating, that the, um, some of the special permit uses were taken, if you look at page three of that section, special permit uses are crossed out as a use in the special permit zone because they've been moved over to a site plan use instead of a special permit use. And then you have a few additional, yeah, um, uses added in. Um, but also that we did, um, specifically were concerned about the definitions of uses and wanted to make sure that certain uses that we had realized we were discussing, um, required definitions. And so the clean contractor shop there is at the bottom of the first page of the BT one section, there is the proposal to add the definition of a clean contractor, and again, you can disagree with that definition and want to tweak it or, or what have you, or um, want to include, you know, whatever that can, you know, but that there is a definition in order to, um, show what that means as opposed to um, a landscaper, you know, which we typically would see outside storage from, you know, so. It says specifically engaged in building trades and indoor storage of tools, equipment, supplies or materials, et cetera, et cetera, so just to um, clarify what the, this amendment on these two sections, BT one, BT two, and then their related um, sections that would get modified with them, including the definitions.
I'm just going to go back to the page, uh, that was, um, BT two, this is on page three there. And I know that Francesco had said that if it was already there and it wasn't crossed off and it was already existing in our reserve, in our um, tech, in our text or our, our regulation, excuse me. So just looking down to item I, which is religious charitable and alimicary institute, subject to the requirement of section eleven L, I, I'm not sure that we want to put a religious institute on the Berlin turnpike.
And that exists in the regulation now. That's an existing.
Yes, I mean, I'm saying that if we're working this regulation over and we're going to be adding other stuff in and changing um, some acreage requirement as well, um, can we not eliminate some of these is, some of the ones that are existing?
I think the one, if it's not proposed in the, um, in, in what was noticed, we'd have to renotice to change additional portions of the regulation.
Okay.
You know, tweaking a provision that, you know, something that's there, you know, say perhaps, well, we want to say the, the radio or television broadcast facility is moving to, uh, wait, has that moved? No.
No, I was, yeah.
You know, separating out a health club from a fitness club.
Yeah.
That might be a little different, but something that is a different thing that they might not have brought somebody out to look, we'd have to renotice.
Okay, but I, I just, I noticed that and, and looking at it, and it just sort of, the more I thought about it, um, I just realized that I wasn't keen on it. Anyway, all right, okay, so go ahead.
One clarification here, I'm reading this paper with, uh, with the blue stripe on top, and it says, uh, are you comfortable amending standard lot sizes? And reduce the front yard requirement from fifty to thirty. Uh, it was just notified as twenty-five from Chris, so I just want to get a clarification, is it thirty or twenty-five?
It's, it's twenty-five feet as presented in the recommended amendment, that, that was, uh, a worksheet we used a few months ago just to generate discussion, that, that's not the proposed amendment.
You need a new copy of the proposed amendment, they weren't distributed a couple of weeks ago, but I have a couple of extra copies.
We'll take one. I grabbed, I think I grabbed the wrong one.
Let me, let me share one, one hurt. I'll just share one for her.
We'll just take one.
That's all right, just one between the two, we, we share good.
I think we beat the, uh, district one and two, BT one and two. Um, do we want to go on to the SPD D or? Anyone have a, I mean, I, yes, what?
Figure? Don't know, I don't know. Um, whatever, um. The, because we are adding that definition for clean contractor, and I'm reminded that you went through um, contractor shop definitions and stuff in the GI zones and, or in the industrial zones, and you really, you know, buttoned up contractor shops, not clean contractor shops, but contractors and, and storage and all that. Um, I do think, um, it would be helpful for the record if there, you, you deliberately look at that definition and see if you're comfortable with the definition the way it is proposed. And if you want me to read it out loud or you are all reading it, it looks like. Sure. So on the BT one section at the bottom of the first page, um, add the definition to section two B, clean contractor, a site or facility used by a contractor engaged in the building trades for, for the indoor storage of tools, comma, equipment, comma, supplies, comma, or other materials typically used off-site. Includes the outdoor parking of registered contractor vehicles with gross vehicle weight of fifteen thousand pounds or less. The bottom of the first page of the BT one, you'll see a recommended zoning amendments BT one. And they were the same batch. They are not the same batch.
I'm, I'm just. I got another question, eliminating car sales. And what I need to be in here.
I do see in here, uh, boat vehicles, equipment, sales and service. So for eliminating car sales, I think that's just about the same as boat sales and stuff like that.
Maureen, I have a quick question, which one of these were posted?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Because I'm reading mine right now, uh, minimum front yard.
Yeah, I had the wrong, that I grabbed from, but they both have the same date at the top that says twelve nineteen twenty-four. And that's, you know, I would, color, not color, I thought it was all the same print, let me.
Because I'm six P.
Going online.
Six B on page two, after fifty or thirty-five, this is reduce the item, uh, reduce the item knives. Minimum lot size from one acre to two acres, I'll traverse.
Oh, that's all right. Francisco, do you remember fixing that at some point? Was that?
No, I, no, I don't recall.
You will also think that the private transportation, it says in here, buses, okay? Private transportation, uh, or the bus thing that you were talking about.
Oh, yeah, under BT two.
B two two. You're not, you're not go get a Daco, check like that on property like that. Okay, uh, you may get fast track terminal, like, like New Britain Fast Tracks downtown, okay? Uh, that's a question if you want to know, okay? The big terminals like a Daco. Uh, you know how big Daco's yard is on South Street? That is overgrown now and they're looking for a lot more like acres. And they would love to come to Burrell and if we find a, a, a lot size, a big enough for that, okay? Uh, but, uh, you know. And, uh, it says auto rental services with that private transportation. I don't think that's a problem. That's just regular parking lot maybe, uh, you know, and a regular storefront. But I do, uh, not understand the, uh, your boat vehicles and, and, uh, boat vehicles, equipment, sales, service. Cause that's the same as a used car dealer or something like that. You know, so I'm, I'm looking through little things here and you know, I don't, now with this, this one that we just got handed to us.
It's so I did, we, I am finding out that the black and white one that you all should have gotten. I think you are quoting from it. And with the, what I read as contractor shop is not the one that was posted. You were reading the right contractor shop. Language that was posted. Um, Francisco, will you confirm that that's the one that was supposed to have been distributed?
Yes.
Able to do that?
The one that you read, correct, is the correct definition.
The one I read. All right, so we posted the wrong thing. They're both dated twelve nineteen twenty-four, but I posted, did, can you go on our website, Francisco, and look at what we posted? I'm sorry to show you that.
Let me take, let me take a look at that.
I didn't realize there was a difference in trying to figure out.
I, I just had a quick question. Ken, with, with Mr. Mr. Ziegman was just saying about that particular one, is it possible to add the language that it cannot be used car sales or dealership, something like that? Because I'd like to keep that language in, but I would agree that I don't want it to be misused. I don't know if that's possible or not. I just kind of throw that out as an overall thought. Cause I don't want to get rid of the use, but I don't want to have it being misused for used cars. No, absolutely. Yeah. And then this, and the guy I'm talking about fits under that, but he's not doing car sales, which is something we definitely do not want to see more of.
Um, it may be a silly question, but, um, in the clean contractor, you talk about materials typically used. Are there any hazardous type of materials that they're gonna be storing at all?
Usually no, no.
Or yes or no that?
I, I don't know of any hazard materials that contractors use.
I would defer to the fire marshal to tell me whether there's, um, materials that would be typically in a contractor shop facility that would require specials. So we do know that, you know, you may have antifreezees or something, you know, if you're doing HVAC. Um, there are chemicals that I would imagine contractors do have to have oils for certain things. And, and it's, you know, part of what they do, um, for, with regard to building code and fire code, when they came in for their use and, you know, their licensing. That all goes through our building department and fire marshal if there, um, would be anything that would be identified there. If there are others, I'd need to ask somebody who knows more about those businesses to tell me that. And to answer that question properly, but we can try to find out more about what types of things might be.
Okay.
Stored, but at the same time, I think, um, they would, my guess is we would find out that if someone is going to have certain types of chemicals or whatnot, that then the building code or fire code kicks in and says, you have to have this kind of suppression system. You have to have this, um, separation tween types of chemicals. You know, even, you know, the grocery store, they can't store ammonia and, and chlorine in the same vicinity at the grocery store. They have to separate them by aisle, I think.
I can offer a little bit of insight on that, but I'm gonna say that I am no expert. But Connecticut is an NFPA state, meaning it's a National Fire Protection Association state. So nation, the NFPA rules are what we go by. And then in addition to NFPA, um, businesses are also required to report when they have inventories, um, in excess of, I think it's, if my memory is right, if, if a business has inventory in excess of ten thousand pounds of a, a single product, that has to be reported to the fire marshal under Sarah Title Three. So, um, Sarah Title Three has other rules, um, that require, um, reporting to the fire marshal as well that I'm not, um, so familiar with. But, um, the Sarah Title Three has all these cutoffs with the different weights and volumes that are kept on inventory. And that's what triggers reporting and authorization through the fire marshal's office. So there's, uh, cause I think most businesses would have small quantities of, you know, there's potential to have small quantities of hazardous. Just like people could have in their homes. Um, but then when it gets into the larger quantities, that's where the fire marshal gets involved.
You have a further question with regards to, you want us to find out more and, you know?
Well, at this time. All right, so Francisco, did you find something?
I did, I did not, I could not find the document on, on the website.
It's, uh, it's, Francisco, it's on the Planning and Zoning Commission page. It's attached to the agenda that's posted.
Is it attached to the agenda? Yeah.
Yes.
I did go to the page.
Agenda, it's on there. Cause I looked at it. I just, you know, I haven't been involved closely enough to do, know the difference between the two. So I can't help you.
I, I went to the legal notice page and found it. I looked at what was posted with the notice of public hearings.
All right, so, so we did not post the correct one or did we?
So I'm asking Francisco to confirm if it was the correct one. It appears as though it may not be, if based on the definition of contract.
Okay, yeah, I found, I found the document. No, this is not the, this is not the most recent version.
Oh, sure.
This, this was a, appears to be a working version. Hence the, um, the red strike through that's, uh, visible and there is not a reference to the gross vehicle weight of the registered vehicles. So should we at this point pose the public hearing and? Oh, we do?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
You, you had the incorrect amendments posted. So the clerk got the incorrectment, yeah, copy. So, um, you, yeah, you have to, uh, continue the public hearing. You have to leave it open.
All right.
Well, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
That's the other.
So.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion to continue.
I am, I wanna, like, secret apologies.
Oh, don't worry. Francisco wants to go. Francisco wants to clock out. We want to finish the agenda. It's not a problem. What do we want to?
There are way to check if, would it be improper, the other amendments, if any of the other amendments are.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that.
So I, I, I think I really don't have an issue with that. Um, if the other language is correct, especially given the way that you, you separately listed them on the agenda, I think that's fine. Um, so if there's some that, uh, you know, uh, cause I know you haven't specifically talked about all of them. Um, if you want to move on and go to any, uh, that have not changed, uh, yeah, there's no problem with you passing on those. I don't think, because the copy was correct with regard to that.
We can repost for any we find incorrect to have it continued to the next meeting. We have time to do the posting with the town clerk. Um, they aren't attached to the legal notice that goes in the paper. Just reference to come, you know, to go to the webpage to, to read them. You don't put the full text in the paper. So, um, you have time and it can be continued to the twentieth.
Okay. All right, so we, we have a motion.
What's the motion?
The motion was to continue.
Make the motion to continue items one and two. So, March twentieth.
Okay, we have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jorsy. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. All right, so are we still gonna tackle the SP?
I, I think you should continue all items because I, I'm seeing inconsistencies between what was posted and the most recent versions of the drafts that were provided to the town.
Okay, so that would include, um, the, the remaining items.
Correct. And the issue.
Do it all.
The, the issue being that the documents were provided in track changes with uh, all changes that had been made over the course of their development in track changes. And what was, what was published is the track changes version, which confuses the ongoing changes that were made from the changes that are recommended.
Okay, terrific. So do you want to?
I will make the motion to continue on items three, four, and five.
Okay, we have a motion to continue. That's till also to March twentieth. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Jorsy. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. All right. Thank you, Francisco, and we'll get this sorted out.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for your time.
All right, good night.
Night.
So do I recommend the, the, the commission throw away the papers they have now and then we'll get a new set with the right stuff?
I got the right one.
The order, that's not the right ones.
No, I have the right one. This is the ones we got.
Well, I don't know.
The one I read with the fifteen hundred pound gross vehicle weight.
Oh, you have that?
Yeah.
The colored one, which is why I was off.
I've had this since February sixth.
I pulled mine from that package too. Unfortunately, when we grabbed it to post it.
Well, I'll tell you what.
Sorry.
No, no, don't worry about it. And what you're gonna do is we'll just attach the real one. Now that we all have our little fancy laptops, you can attach the real ones.
Or remove the other one from pending applications and that, um, the corrected one on the pending applications of your laptops too.
That's fine. All right.
Complaining because honestly, I am exhausted and.
I know. All right. I know you got a baby waiting. All right, so let's move on. So deliberations, Tommy Kokomo has withdrawn and then we have continued deliberations. So now we're into planners comments.
Does that, the, um, been, those that signed up for the training have been signed up for the training. And the other, um, thing, the other event, the aqua turf event, um, the books for the all-day seminar. If you're gonna do that online, um, should be coming to the P and Z office, except for one, because one had the registration done individually. Um, before we knew we could do them all in one loop. Um, so, well, it's probably distribute those at the twentieth. For the meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Not all of you are going, so you all get new books.
And I did talk with Scott Hamel today and he said that he did listen to eight hours of tape. I think he wasn't here to record it, but he did take the eight-hour class online. So I think we have to correct his, um, his requirement. How do we turn this off? I forgot.
I just need to, somebody must have come in twenty twenty.
There it is. Yeah.
I don't have the spreadsheet today to update it. I didn't bring that back with me. I'm gonna turn them both on.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all right. I just wanted to make sure that you got squared away. Okay. All right, now, okay, so that's, that's it for planner comments. Okay, and everyone pretty, okay. Your adjournment?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ogan at nine oh nine. And the second by Ms. Jorsy. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so move. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
You too.